Okay, welcome everyone. We're sorry to keep you waiting. Our 2:30 meeting ran over. A little bit longer than what we originally thought. So I know your time is valuable and I'm sorry that we kept you all waiting, especially this time of year. I know you all need to get the target. I'd like to call the December 19th, 2019 work session to order. And right now we have a prom request from Diane Dietrich, prom sponsor for JP Knapp.
Good afternoon. Before we get started, because I won't forget, I just wanted to mention everyone that we do have an event happening this evening for our students. A fun run. It'll go from 4:30 to 8 o'clock. So when you're leaving, if you would just be careful, because there might be students around the track. Just so, because I'd forget by the time. It could be, we could be done in three minutes and I'd still forget.
Christine, let me see. The track is the drive.
Oh, yes. Sorry, we don't have real track. Okay.
The drive.
It's not really, the drive. The one way. Big signs caution children. Okay. So, good afternoon, members of the board and Mr. Stefanic. We're here again to talk about prom. And I also want to introduce Diane Dietrich, because I'm sure many of you do know her. She was our former Teacher of the Year and Assistant Teacher, TIA, Teacher Assistant of the Year. Feels like she could definitely be Teacher of the Year. So she has decided to take prom over and wanted to help us out this year. And I'm just sort of helping her along a little bit here at the beginning. And she's already done a wonderful job with creating our committee and they've picked a theme and passed the ball rolling. So we're just here tonight to ask again for permission to use the same location that we used last year.
Yep, and this year we're going to be going to the Pines in Elizabeth City. We've had the prom there for the past two events that we've had. It is located at 1525 North Road Street. And the facility is a great facility if you haven't been there and you have an event. I completely encourage you to call them, they are great. And we have the situation with the parking under control. We have that circular drive where we'll be able to drop the kids right off. If they come up with a limo, they can get right there. So there's no problems with too much congestion right there.
It's also a private parking lot, so the students go into the actual parking lot itself. And you're not competing with anything else in the area.
And that'll be the only event that evening too, so. And of course, this year we have Deputy Jason Jones with us at our school. And he has offered to do the prom for us. We have a mutual aid agreement that will exist between Carota County and Elizabeth City Law Enforcement Agencies. We have that covered as well. We do have some pictures of our other events, the 2018, 2019.
We've received a lot of positive feedback from our students. So while Ms. Dietrich mentioned that the facilitator there, the coordinator, she's wonderful as far as helping you. And they've gone through a few actually, but with setup and breakdown and cleanup. And they're great with communication. And they really, I think, go above and beyond. And so finding a place that is within our budget and affordable, as well as super helpful, is great for such a big event for us. And so, and then we've put out surveys to our students each year afterwards, asked for feedback. And always a lot of feedback about the location. So this was last year's event. We did it around the world theme. And then generally, we also usually have for our students also the food. Any questions from?
And staff. That's not just for, we're just pointing that out.
Our staff is wonderful. Almost every year we have every single staff member attend for the evening unless they had some other obligation, which generally usually only, I would say it's probably only about one or two people a year. Other than that, at least every staff member is there for a portion of the night, if not the entire night. And sometimes the entire day.
Yeah. Well, y'all have done a great job with it in the past. Every year I hear such good things about the prom.
Ms. Rose, you visited us last year.
I was gonna say, I stopped in last year and I was very impressed.
And Mr. Stefanic, you came the year before. And Ms. Doughty was there last year also. Matter of fact, I think she's okay.
Actually, yeah, bring your kids, bring your family, stay there. It is, they set it up as a very elegant event. I always get impressed by country clubs or golf courses, that they can make their venues. That you don't even know that, you know, you're at a golf course. It just seems like a big event center and it's nicely done. And the students are enjoying it and very appropriate.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we have our audit report.
I guess that's me. My name's Adam Soperk. I'm a partner with Anderson Smith White, the new independent auditors for current academic schools. And in front of you should each have a bound set of financial statements, as well as two letters that we've issued. One is the letter to the board, the three-page letter to the board. Basically, the board is the governing body that hires us to conduct the audit of management. And so in that three-page letter, we just let you know that the audit went as planned. We didn't have any difficulties with management, didn't have any difficulties with the records. There were no unusual accounting standards that needed interpreting. There were no adjustments that went uncorrected, no large adjustments. So if there was anything that would not fit in the context of like an audit finding or a management comment, we would probably put it in this letter, just letting you know again how the audit went. And so there were no issues in conducting the audit and everything went as planned. And we have issued the statements to the local government commission for their review. And they have reviewed them and approved them. So at this point, everything's been submitted and approved, so no problems there. The other letter is a one-page letter to management and obviously for your reading as well. Just letting you know of any instances that we might come across where we see a possibility to, whether it be increase internal control structures, or just overall management of the school district, or even issues with the funds that we see trend-wise that we might want to point out, that don't necessarily pop out of these financial statements. Because the financial statements really are just one-year statements. And sometimes you forget about what something might look like four or five years ago. And so the letter, the one-page letter issued to management is just to point out the fund balance situation and how it's changed over the last five years essentially. Your fund balance sits at around $670,000. And that compares to almost $3.2 million five years ago. The trend has been a significant usage of fund balance. This year was only about $340,000. But in the previous two years was over $600,000. So with only $670,000 left, you obviously can't have one of those years for the 1920 years. So again, we recommend taking steps to remedy that situation. But it is not any kind of internal control finding or any kind of issue, audit issue. Just again, something to be aware of. Also, aside from your general fund balance, your school food service fund has also diminished their cash balance to just $25,000. They used cash in the current year of about $70,000 or $50,000. And so, yeah, they used $45,000 of cash going from $71,000 down to $25,000. So again, that usage won't be permissible this year without funding from the governmental fund, from the general fund. So at some point during the year, probably in the spring months, there might be the need to fund cash into that school food service fund, just depending on how the year's been so far. So again, that's just something to be aware of. An unforeseen expenditure that might come across the general fund, because it is the obligation of the general fund to fund the school food service fund when it doesn't have any funds left.
Hey, excuse me. I'm looking at that and I'm curious, because it showed, obviously you weren't here, but you got the data and you're showing us where we were in 2015 compared with now.
Yep.
So... Does this have anything to do with adding those free lunches for all at those schools possibly? I'm just asking.
No, we, the actual expanding those programs, we have not expanded them. We, since the board raised some questions, we did not do the expansion of the programs.
What's causing this?
So if we're talking about free lunches and the expansion of what is the CEP program, that's just a child nutrition function. It doesn't have anything to do with your general fund balance. So I'm assuming your question is just about the child nutrition.
Yeah, I'm wanting to know if we didn't expand the programs, which you just told me.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure, I thought we didn't, but I wasn't sure if we did. And are we, why are we running out of money?
Well, Angela, Angela.
Our labor, when I first started, I was able to get your labor down to 46% of labor. We're up to 60% now. It's the cost of employees.
It's salaries and benefits. The benefits associated with a full-time staff member now represents an additional 40% between FICA, healthcare costs, and the retirement rate, which is now approaching 19, almost 20%. So a $50,000 employee actually costs you $70,000. That retirement rate has gone up 5 to 6% in the last few years. State mandated salary increases for non-classified personnel. Reimbursement rates from the federal government have not increased in proportion to salaries and even cost of food. We actually find that in the districts that implement the CEP program, which is where more kids eat for free, if your free and reduced percentage is the right amount in that school, you'll actually make more money, because there will be more participation. So with that increased participation means increased federal reimbursements. And it usually covers the additional food cost. Your salaries for most part is a sunk cost. If it takes three people to operate an elementary kitchen, it takes three people to operate that kitchen whether you serve 1,000 meals or 2,000 meals in a week. And so with the CEP program, kids know that they can eat for free. Even if they only like one or two items on the tray, they'll still go through the line, get their one or two items, and throw the rest of the stuff in the trash. And that's where you see online pictures of all the waste. But your kids have eaten for free and eaten the few items that they like. So again, it all depends on the free and reduced percentages at those schools as to whether it can make money for you or not. But again, expansion of the CEP program oftentimes is an increase in profitability.
Does this deficit each year include children that borrow, so to speak, and don't pay it back?
That comes out of the local fund.
So that's not in this figure?
This figure is... He touched on it, the cost of the mandated raises that we have to give.
Yeah.
I get no additional funding for that. So every year when we have to give the pay raises, those pay raises are allocated. However, the funding for every student that walks through that line stays the same. So when we get an increase for our paid students, I'm getting maybe 24 to 26 cent reimbursement. So every time that student that qualifies as a paid, I'm only getting that much money from the state. I get $3.48 or 68 cents this year for a free student. So I have to allocate, it's supposed to be 40% labor, 40% food, and the rest of it for supplies and everything else. Right now, we're at 60%. And there's nothing I can do about it. I have a minimum labor.
You have a minimum staff.
I have it so much that I serve at the high school today. I do that pretty frequently.
And there's no way we can raise the price of lunches to try and break even?
Well, if you raise, I can show you the statistics.
Your participation goes down more than the wage.
So let me get this straight. So I wrap my brain around this, what you're saying. You're saying you get a certain amount allocated per pupil from the state?
Yes, sir.
Or is that in addition to our local funds? Are you talking to this state money?
You don't get me anything local until the end.
Okay.
Until they run out.
All right.
And as he allocated, we won't have any more cash value, so there will be money coming in.
So as they raise the pension in one department of the state, if you will, you know, the legislature, and then they raise possibly the wage, and then they didn't necessarily raise the other component, is that what you're telling me?
We fight every year a school nutrition with the state for that allocation. And it gets heard, but it doesn't get allocated.
But just to make it all clear, this is a federal food service program.
I'm not state, yeah, I'm federally funded.
Right, the money she gets from the state is what they, a lot of times they used to call federal flow-through, that the federal government gives an allocation to North Carolina and then North Carolina gives it to the district. But that comes from DC. And so if the state says that the raise is going up for classified employees, cooks, secretaries, custodians, bus drivers, if those salaries go up, but then in Washington DC, the allocation per lunch served doesn't go up, then they, then they're eating all the costs themselves.
There's too many people that are disconnected, making too many decisions that impact one thing. I see.
Yes.
It's a quagmire.
And it doesn't help that the cost is increased every year, so.
But then the real kicker is, then the federal government wants to circumvent the whole thing. And they want to tell you, hey, if you get everybody to eat for free, then you can actually not spend as much money. You see how it's a big, I don't, I'm not buying it.
I live in that room.
I think we need to figure, I think we need to figure out another way.
There were no findings in your audit?
No, no findings.
Think that's a first?
How about deposits? Cash deposits at schools, we're hit with that every year.
Yeah, and in...
You would need that.
In my test of those records, which were 60 cash receipts, I saw no cash receipts deposited a day late. You can expand that search. You know, there's hundreds of cash receipts across all your schools. I'm sure if I looked until I found one, I could do that.
I'm just teasing, because that was a reoccurring.
Oh, I know. And but our audit is conducted more of an audit standard. We selected our 60, tested them, found no instances, and cleared your exception.
Is this what you call an unqualified audit?
This is called, yep, a clean, unmodified, is the new terminology. And that is in relation to the financial statements. And then also no findings or question costs related to state and federal compliance testing. We also test your state, federal dollars to make sure they're spent in accordance with the programs that we audit. The state public school fund and the child nutrition were the two major programs this year. Your major programs include like Title I, DC, VocaD on the state side, and then the state public school fund. And that's audited for compliance every year. One more point on the child nutrition. The programs that we see that actually make money do not have a significant number of full-time employees. They're using part-time employees and getting out of paying benefits, using 30-hour or less weeks, using a lot of subs. One person, one district even uses contracted labor from a third-party organization. It boils down to salaries.
What do we have as far as part-time versus full-time percentage-wise?
All of my staff are part-time except for the managers. And then I believe I have, Matt, correct me, four or five that are shared staff that are bus drivers and then come in with us or monitors and come in. So out of my 30, about half of them are full-time and the other half are not. And we try to do that as diligently as possible. Or try to keep a, I don't call them a full-time sub, but a couple of subs on hand. It's just this year has been the most difficult at getting it, because people are looking for full-time. So they don't want those minimal hours. If I could get five three-hour people, that would be wonderful. But that, it doesn't work that way. Because if they're three hours with me, they'll probably be five hours with Matt. Or if they're five hours with Matt, three hours with him.
We share employees so much to try to fill the buses and the cafeterias.
I was just getting ready to say, the bus situation, that's why.
Yeah, so I mean, we, typically if she hires someone, they come talk to me because they want more time. Or if we hire someone, we'll send them her way, because we know she needs help. So a lot of times that puts that employee as a full-time employee with shared benefits between the two departments.
And I can tell you, those are usually our most dependable employees.
They have a stake in the game.
It's been that way for...
Well, and to talk to this piece about cost, yes, they are full-time employees. And yes, we do have the benefit package that goes along with that. But we're actually getting two high-need job classifications filled with that one person. You know, a lot of people don't want a two-and-a-half or three-hour food service job. And so if you take that and you pair it up with a bus driving job, then they can get it. They're, they've got a full-time status. Then we do get the extra cost of the benefits. But again, then we're not shorthanded and we're not doing double runs in buses or trying to serve, you know, several hundred kids with one person in the cafeteria. So that's worth the extra expense, in my opinion.
And your makeup, your demographics make it difficult to operate it. It's, districts that have higher free and reduced percentages are typically more profitable. And that's just because of the federal reimbursement rate. If you actually look at your breakdown on revenue, your sales in child nutrition represent $430,000. And this is on page 22. I'm flipping around, I will go back to some of the other things. But as long as we're doing child nutrition, on page 22, very top, your food sales are $430,000. And then in the middle of the page, your federal reimbursements are $646,000. So that's, that is a high percentage of food sales making up your total revenues. And again, when faced with, do I pay $3 for the two things I might eat? That's a decision that each student will make. And a 10, 20% increase in food costs or in meal price will change their decision. So we do see participation declines with increased, with increased prices. Now, while you're losing money, the federal government is going to start, they require you to increase rates by at least 10 cents a year. They've put that on hold, because we've had some storms come through and a lot of areas hit. And if you don't raise prices by 10 cents per meal, then the general fund has to pay that difference, which ends up being a couple thousand dollars. So whether that becomes part of that equation, as whether to increase meal prices or not, again, remains to be seen. There has been some holds on that price equity tool calculation that'll tell you if you have to raise the prices or not. But again, that's, again, one of the issues that we're pointing out in that letter is just that, you know, with the cash reserves where they are, there's the potential for having to fund this school food service fund in the future. If there's nothing else on child nutrition, I'd ask you to turn back to page one. This is the independent audit report. You asked about whether unqualified, unmodified opinion. This is that letter. And at the very bottom of that letter is the opinion paragraph. And that paragraph basically says that, in our opinion, these financial statements are accurate. We've not had to modify our, that opinion. We don't have to add, first opinion is unmodified, clean audit opinion. So that is the opinion letter. Again, you hired us to audit management and let you know that the financial statements are accurate. I personally do 15 school board audits all over the state. And so can offer some commentary and show you trends and discuss whether numbers are good or bad. But the main objective is, we believe that these statements are accurate. Good years and bad years, they're accurate at least, so.
Sir, might I ask you something about 22? I'm sorry, back to 22.
Yep, certainly.
I apologize.
No.
So I'm looking at this. Is, are we, are we $780,000 in red?
So the, and I don't know how much you've been, not, I don't want to say taught, but explain the pension and OPEV, the post-employment benefits. What kind of impact those have had on these statements? So briefly, about five years ago, you had to add the cost or the liability for pensions onto these statements. It's a state liability. When somebody retires, the state pays them their pension for the rest of their life. It is not a liability you actually write to those retirees. You pay that liability by paying your retirement rate, which is now 19%. You pay the state into the fund. But that fund, the North Carolina pension plan is actually pretty well-funded at about 80-some percent. So for all the estimated liability out there for retirees, there's about 85 cents on the dollar in an account somewhere invested. That's a pretty good percentage when you look across the country. But that still leaves 15 cents that it represents a liability. On these statements now, your portion of that liability has actually been allocated to you. On your governmental funds, which is your state, federal, local funds, those liabilities don't actually get recorded in the fund. They're recorded outside of the fund in Exhibits 1 and 2, which treats you like you are a Fortune 500 company. It's a combined balance sheet and a combined income statement. It combines all your liabilities, even the value of your buildings, which you can't sell. So they really don't do you any good having a value on the record, on the books for. So when we actually look at analyzing your funds, the funds are on Exhibits 3 and 4. Those are your balance sheet and income statements at the fund level. But the school nutrition program, because it is a business fund, that liability is actually recorded right here within the fund. So if you look on page 21, under your liabilities, you have noncurrent liabilities, $278,000 for the pension plan, and the big one, which was implemented two years ago, $695,000 for retirement benefits. So when you retire, you get your pension amount for the rest of your life. You also get your healthcare costs covered for the rest of your life. If you retired with the right number of years of service. That liability, again, is a promise to retirees. And for every dollar of that potential liability, there's 3 cents in a bank somewhere. So that is a huge unfunded liability that gets pared down, allocated to every unit in the state that's a part of it. Every, every school district's financial statements now look like this. Every school child nutrition balance sheet has this giant liability that you won't have to pay, but it still affects your net position. So when we actually look to analyze child nutrition, I don't look at net position anymore. I look at cash. At the end of every year, cash is going to be very comparable to where it was a year ago, barring some timing differences on payables. But if your cash goes up or down $50,000, that is something you can actually see and understand and make sense, rather than seeing that your net position went down $123,000. You didn't really lose $123,000. Your giant liability changed by $123,000. Your cash really only changed by $50,000. So that, again, a long explanation into accounting. But we really, for child nutrition, we don't look at fund balance anymore as a true financial status or gauge. You really look at your assets and most notably, cash.
So at the top of 22 then, when we're talking about total operating expenses and then we're talking about operating losses before we get down there?
Yep.
Talking about that million, $44,000?
Yep.
As a loss?
That is, when you look at revenues, your sales are operating sales, but your federal reimbursements are not considered operating revenues. So there's this section of non-operating revenues, where that giant chunk of federal reimbursements, the $646,000 is part of those non-operating expenditures. It's, it's a technicality, you don't collect those funds.
So after that, we're down to the 309?
That's right, you're down to the 309. Yep, and then the state public school fund actually gives you some money to pay salaries of $100,000.
Yeah, I see that.
And then you, capital outlay in the general fund might buy some equipment. And that's what those capital contributions are. So you, you got $85,000 of free equipment.
So then you get down to the $123,000 loss?
Yes, book loss.
Man, we're doing great. Every figure on here is in the red.
That's, that's right.
I'm not feeling it. But I appreciate the explanation.
And that $123,000 loss converts to a $40,000 usage of cash. That's...
Sounds like a credit card.
So again, real quickly, page 13. This is Exhibit 3. Again, for your governmental funds, this is the balance sheet on the basis of fund balance, not net position. I don't care how much your buildings are worth and how much that pension liability is. That doesn't affect... That doesn't affect how much you can spend in the nineteen-twenty budget. So this fund balance, or this balance sheet here on, on page thirteen, Exhibit Three, at the very first column, that's the general fund, you can see at the bottom of that column, six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of fund balance. A hundred and sixty-one thousand has already been appropriated in the nineteen-twenty budget, leaving you unassigned fund balance of four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. You also have some fund balance over in the other special revenue fund. That's where you hold revenues like Medicaid and some other state and federal grants that have to be spent on those grants. There is some non-grant money in there, but the majority of it is restricted for usage. But there's five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of fund balance there. Your capital outlay has four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of fund balance. And then your individual schools have about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars on hand.
Adam, I'm gonna add something in, just for the board's information, that, what was it, six hundred and seventy-two?
Yep.
The, the, the general fund, fund balance. Every year, you know, people are asking, well, what's your fund balance looking like? What's your fund balance looking like? And Lori in the past, you know, would say, I think it's about this, I think it's about that. We wait for this audit to actually put, you know, the pin, you know, in the exact number on what was, you know, in the fund balance as of June thirtieth. And so, we were sitting at six seventy, and, you know, we thought, you know, that we'd down closer to about five hundred thousand. And so, we had some nice accounting last year that we didn't have to drop a fund balance as much as we predicted.
So we may still have to go into fund balance to get teachers this year, right?
Well, that's the one sixty. If the board heard that number, that there's an allocated number in this year's budget of a hundred and sixty-one thousand, those are the new teachers that we put in, and that ties directly to the three positions that we're requesting of the county to pick up because of our north-end growth. If they picked those up at our averaged number of sixty thousand per teacher, that's one eighty, and then we wouldn't be drawn out of the fund balance, which was our statement. You know, as of June, we're gonna try to go with no draw on the fund balance. But we plan for two new teachers at the elementary level because of K through three numbers, and we ended up with five in the district. And so those are the three we're asking the commissioners for additional resources for.
So, we're saying that, right now, if that doesn't happen, and we don't need any, we have six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So we're saying...
Right, right, in the fund balance, yes.
Page fifteen, Exhibit Four, is the income statement, so to speak, for those same funds. You can see your revenues across the, the top rows. Your general fund carries your fund balance, but does not represent the bulk of your funding. That is from the state. So you get twenty-seven million dollars from the state, one point five million dollars from the federal government, another eight hundred and eighty-five thousand of special revenues, one point nine million dollars coming through the capital outlay fund, and eight hundred thousand dollars in the individual schools. And again, back to that first column, ten point five million dollars from the county, for that county funding. So, that fund balance is used to cover the changes mandated by the state that maybe they don't necessarily fund. And so, in years where you have increasing salaries from the state level, that use, that fund balance usage in the general fund typically goes up. And that's what we've seen, looking back at, you know, the last few years' numbers of, of fund balance usage. The state is slower to fund the salary increases than they are to grant the salary increases.
And, and just an informational piece to the board, that point three eight of a student that we were short to be the official two percent over our ADM cost, we called and the state does round up.
Wonderful.
No, 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 no.
What?
Oh, they round up, yes, we're short.
Oh!
A whole person.
So, yeah, so they, even though we're short point three, they're gonna make us short a whole person.
But how do you round up? Do they take math? I mean, it's like, five goes that, that way?
Right.
And, you know, over five goes that way?
So that costs us out?
So, that, that cost, that will, that costs us an allocation, if the state signs a budget. If they don't sign a budget, that's a moot point. But if they sign a budget, that would cost us in the range of an extra five hundred thousand dollars from the state.
And why you said five hundred thousand? Just so everybody understands, added is, what, forty-three million dollars?
Exactly.
I want you to say it again, how much the federal government contributes to, because people don't understand this part. I want you to say it.
One point five million of your forty-three million is from the federal government.
Okay. But they got ninety-nine percent of control. Isn't that something? And I wish I...
I don't know if that's the percentage, but they do have regulations.
Again, the, given the makeup of your county, that number is lower than you would, you know, if you were a low-income district.
Yes, sir, I, I understand, I was just, you know, because a lot of people have this perception that, because they make all these rules, that they necessarily fund those rules, and that's not necessarily the case.
Yeah, if you, if you watch any debates on TV, whatever side you're rooting for or not rooting for, they will talk about education as if they funded it all.
Yeah.
And it is, one point five million out of forty-three is very low. But even in the lower-income districts, that percentage, their federal funding is, is minimal. It's six to seven percent of the revenues every year for education come from the federal government. The majority of it is state-funded.
And that's, and they'll fall back, when you, you talk to folks federally, they fall back to the Constitution where they say that the education of the students is a state responsibility.
Yeah, and then the state says, your, your local government is well able to take care of it, and so you should be getting more money from your local government.
Right, well, yes, they do, they do check the local resources.
And the local government says the state ought to be paying more.
Exactly.
And everybody, yeah, nobody wants to own it.
Right, and we open the cash register and it's still empty.
And the point of just showing you the, the whole forty-three million, your six hundred and seventy-two thousand represents less than two percent of your total budget. It'd be like having a fifty thousand dollar salary, you've got, you know, a thousand bucks in the bank. That's, I mean...
Yeah, we, we've been watching it, we've been watching it every year.
Yeah, but the real sad part is, the contribution that the federal government makes is only three percent of it. One point five million out of forty-three.
Yep.
Mark, have we reached out to our elected officials in Raleigh about that point three eight student to see?
Not yet, we just got confirmation over about ten days ago.
Okay.
We were having trouble reaching the person that is the, the, the grand poobah of that department. And so now we finally got the thing, and they said, any fraction of a student over a certain number, you go up to the next number. And so, you, if you don't reach that next number, you haven't reached it. And so that's our, that's our two percent piece that we had to go after.
Perhaps that rule could be changed, if we contact the right officials?
Right, that would be the thing at the, at the state level, if they could help us out with that.
The only problem is by the time they change it, we'll be in another category we weren't pertaining to us.
Say that again?
By the time they change that rule, with all due respect, I wish they would, but by the time they could possibly change it, we'd be out of that category and into another category.
Well, the two years of the five years I've been here, we've been within five students. We just missed it by a couple of students. This one now, it's a fraction of a student, but we've been, you know, less than five students from that two percent number twice already.
It sounds, it sounds like something we went through long ago with small school money. And the General Assembly did make some special rules so that we hung on to that for a good while.
Yes, yes.
So maybe they can help us.
I'll reach out to the two...
One other point I, I would make about fund balance, and again, not to harp on this same number, but you are a coastal district, and in the last few years, including this, two years ago, the hurricane damage, the flooding of schools that occurred in some of the other coastal districts, fund balance was crucial for getting companies like Surf Pro paid to dry out schools and tear down sheet rock as needed or whatever. And some of the districts that did not have fund balance saw delays in returning back to school because they could not write that check. They had to get advances from the insurance and then eventually a sixty million dollar allocation. But in the meantime, you know, these, these vendors, if there's, if you can't write a check to them, they will, they'll, they'll leave site.
But what happens with that, and this is the sad thing, the sooner they get in there, the better.
That's right.
Because then the mold and the cleanup is astronomical as far as the cost is concerned. So, without us being financially able to write that check, it could cost you three or four times as much if you're not in there the day after, when you can.
Or, or two to three weeks of, of additional lost time. And, you know, again, just, every storm is different, and, you know, every, every county's different, but a number of them, there, I think there was ten districts that got that, that, that state money. I actually audited four of them, and the difference between the quickness that they were able to get individuals paid definitely depended on how much fund balance they had.
Okay.
That's really about all I've got on the financial statement side. The, you know, we're going over just a couple of pages here. I, I don't want to take away from the fact that this is a seventy-five-page document that we spent a good bit of time writing, but a lot of it is just information about accounting policies, accounting principles, where you, how you allocate receivables, payables, your roll forward of fixed assets. So there's pages and pages of accounting information that, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have in the future. My number is at the bottom of every one of these letters. We actually spent nearly three hundred hours auditing and writing and preparing this document. So, thirty-minute presentation on it, again, don't want to take away from it. But if you would, skipping all that financial data, page sixty-two starts the compliance section of the audit. So page one was the opinion letter over the financial statements, letting you know that they are accurate. Page sixty-two starts three letters. One of them is for state compliance, one of them is for federal compliance, and one of them is over internal control. They are essentially opinion letters as well. The two compliance letters for state and federal, both state that we found no instances of non-compliance or question cost. And the internal control letter says, we noted no instances of internal control deficiencies that we consider to be significant or material. So those would be clean opinion letters and a clean internal audit, or internal control. Again, starting there on page sixty-two.
Any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
For the board's information and for the group here, I, I don't know of any other business that has all the specialty rules around the budget that school districts have. And so for an auditor to come in and say that, you know, everything is within compliance, that's, that's kudos to our finance department and, you know, it's basically on Lori's year, but Larissa helped with the audit and got all the stuff together. So congratulations to Larissa and China Finance Department.
I look forward to coming and doing the same type of presentation next year under Larissa's watch.
But I've been in meetings with people that are trying to become finance officers for school districts, and they come from the business world banking and things like that. And when they start hearing about all the rules and all the exceptions to this or something like that, their jaws are on the floor because they cannot believe, you know, all the things that you have to deal with, with the dollars that come into the school district. So keeping track of all of it and being in compliance, that's, that's appropriate. That's why my feathers get ruffled. Anytime I hear people who don't understand, and they talk about inappropriate costs, we don't have inappropriate costs. The expert just told you that it's in compliance. People may not agree, you know, that we paid for that field trip rather than doing this, or, you know, those types of things. That's not an inappropriate cost or an inappropriate use of tax dollars. That's just a disagreement over what we're using it for. But all the, inside of federal, state laws, all the dollars are supposed to be used for A, B, and C are being used in those exact categories.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Budget amendments, Larissa York?
In your packet, you have my first budget amendment. Even though we still do not have a state budget, we are getting, we have the ability to use some money. So anything that you see in the budget amendment is because of additional allotments and adjustments for just about every state PRC since I, since you guys have adopted the budget. And these are all due to many bills, the many bills that the state has been passing so that we can get some money to actually use. Also in this is our charter school reductions, substitute reimbursements, some state fines and forfeiture's money. We got some money for principal bonuses, some state interest payments, and we got some IT money to pay us for WAN and Y. This also records any budget transfers that were requested by any budget directors, principals, bookkeepers, anything, any, any movement of money is also gonna be seen in these numbers.
This is like where you talked about, if you need one school, you need one money for art, they can move it anywhere.
Yep, yep, yes. Any, any daily, day-to-day money transfers are gonna be in these numbers. So that, that brings our total appropriation of the budget to forty-five million, nine thirty-eight, one eighty-five, and thirty-seven cents.
So this is seven hundred and forty-six, oh, forty-three and a half thousand dollars for instructional services. Is that the same adding on to that instructional services we were talking about at one point?
Yes.
That one million, five thousand, forty-two dollars or whatever it was?
Right, so the two, the two numbers in the increase column would be adding on, and then the number in the decrease would be subtracting.
How does that reflect to that sheet when we had that discussion that none of y'all got? That showed where each little category went to each school? Are we revising now?
I can, I can revise it.
I'm, I'm just asking.
I have not revised it, but I definitely can do that for you if you would like.
I mean...
I don't think it's gonna make, the twenty, I don't think it's gonna make that much of a...
I think it might be important when we have these discussions, not for you necessarily, but for the people that represent the buildings, to have the breakdown that shows how much you're getting for whatever category so that if, now, last meeting, it was one million dollars for ten schools, and now, right...
So you'll be happy to know that I just sent out a whole bunch of reports to our principals and gave them that information.
Yes, ma'am, but what I'm getting at is, so previously, we were looking at one million dollars for ten schools. And now we're looking at almost, what, eighteen or seventeen-five? One point, I mean, one point seven-five is what I'm saying, I'm sorry?
Eighteen.
Excuse me, I missed, but one point seven-five, I'm thinking, I'm thinking eighteen hundred. No, I'm sorry. So what I'm getting at is, I, I just think it would be nice if all these people were in attendance and were utilizing their time, and they're trying to understand what's going on, and we're talking about not you, your job, us, to communicate better with the ten representatives of those schools. So they understand what money's being allocated, and then they see that it nearly doubles, if they felt that there was something they might have really been compelled to talk about, but they really didn't want to because maybe they didn't want us to be bucking the system like I do. Maybe they feel a little bit more warm and fuzzy about it if they had some information in the numbers.
Right, so this week I just emailed them, and I'm going to do it on a monthly basis, their, Kevin's, got his, their allocations, so that they can see what they have and what they've spent.
Per school?
Yes.
Yeah.
The whole of the breakdown.
She sent it to the...
Right. Yes, right. When we're having the discussion here, and I appreciate you doing that, and I'm thankful, I think it would be prudent for us to have the information so they see it firsthand when we're having the actual discussion in case there's any commentary right then.
They already have it then. She sent it to them, right?
I just sent it to them this week.
Yes, ma'am, but when we had the discussion last time, and everybody up here had a spreadsheet, per school, broke down, I don't believe anybody else had it, did you? That's all I was saying.
I think, I, I think what I'm saying, if, if you want them to have that information, that, that might be a different way of, of thinking for... For example, we send it out to the, the building specific to each principal. I think you're asking for them to see the whole payout for the district, and I'm not sure that the allocation to Currituck High School, that the principal of, well, like Mr. Goings, he might not have any interest in that because he's worried about, you know, taking care of Knott's Island.
And I, I appreciate that. Okay. I guess we could do this then. If they don't want to get the same handout we get, which I think they should. I think it would be nice that when we're having the discussion, before we voted on that budget, which we already voted on, now that's an amendment, because that's why we're amending the previous budget.
Right.
I think it would have been appropriate to have that information present per the building, per the person that's here representing the building, so in case they wanted to have a discussion during the work session with the information. That's why I was going with it, maybe.
And I want to put a clarification on this. Instructional services up there, the increase.
It's mostly payroll.
It's mostly sal- it's not just materials. It's, it's mo- it's the salary changes that the state put in on the mini bills. So instructional materials is a subset of instructional services. The five thousand category is anything with services, so that's personnel costs, materials costs, possibly even technology costs, um, some in there. Uh, and so when you're, I think you're talking, the one point two was actually the materials and resources budget. And so that didn't necessarily go up to, uh, one point nine. Just, uh, a, a piece of that may have gone to that. That's the allocation we got from the state. They put it in all the compartments for us.
Yes sir. That's why I think it might paint a clearer picture. If we have the information, the people that are representing the buildings can look at how it breaks down during the course of the discussion. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Is that inc- are we talking about the increase, like the state gave some step increases? Okay. I have one more thing I want to say. When we had that little work session recently, it was brought up about teachers and principals needing additional money for this, or they, they thought they had this, and they're not asking. You know, we're hearing, why don't they have this? Well, they didn't ask. So the sky is certainly not the limit, but I see most of our principals there. And you know, Dr. Lutz and Ms. Doughty both said, we don't, we can't get it for them. We can't even work towards it if we're not asked.
If we don't know.
So please, principals, you know, of course we have a budget. We have to try and work with them. But you might get somewhere if you talk to them. And same for our teachers coming to you as principals. You know, we hear that too. You know, I don't have this. I don't have paper. I don't have that. Well, if they don't come to you and ask for it, you can't provide it, but please encourage them to come to you with their needs.
And then you share it with us.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
Or if they were sitting here and they saw that their capacity for an elementary school was only getting roughly a dollar twenty-five per pupil for the whole year for art. I'm not saying that's what it is. I'm just using that as an example. They might be like, oh, whoa, whoa, we can't really do much with that. That's why I'm saying it'd be prudent for them to have their information prior to us voting on it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. York, for everything you're doing. Thank you for sending out the email and giving them a grasp of, of, uh, different things that have, that have come up this month. Um, the school calendar, Ms. Doughty, the revised nineteen-twenty calendar.
Yes ma'am. We made an error in, um, our calendar adoptions in assuming that the election day was the first Tuesday in May. It is actually the fifth first Tuesday in March. So we have this lovely optional workday in fact for the K, yeah, that was what we thought too. Really did.
They changed it this year.
Yes.
The primaries, primaries back jump.
Hey, and I got an opponent, so if you left it like that, they might have showed up on the wrong day.
You don't, you don't even participate in the primary.
There's no primaries for you guys.
It's a, it's a relatively easy fit. Um, on our K eight calendar, what we're asking to do is we're gonna move, um, and, and Ms. Jones has them, I think you have it in there. The original calendar in March shows nothing on the election day, which is March the third. And it shows a required workday on March the thirteenth and then an optional workday on March twenty-seventh. We're asking to take that optional workday on March twenty-seventh, slide it up to the March third date. Because that optional workday that was there in March was at the end of the grading period, teachers do need time to be able to finalize grades and get that done. So we're asking to make that an early release day on that Friday. So we still get time for teachers to work on inputting grades and getting that, uh, work done. Then that May workday that's sitting on that Tuesday in May, uh, we're gonna add to put at the end of the school year and slide that out of there. So, um, we will get those instructional hours back right there. That will slide to the end of the school year. So again, March third becomes the optional workday for our K schools for election day. March twenty-seventh moves to the early release day, and then the May optional workday moves to the end of the school year.
Okay.
JP Nat was not affected at all. They didn't have the date. They don't normally take off even though they are a polling place because many of their students are on campus. It doesn't impact the work they do, so it will stay as is. The high school, we also had the optional workday because again, we were trying to align our calendars very evenly for parents. So there wasn't half the kids are here and half the kids aren't here. So on that day, again, March third, the high school is not a polling place. It shouldn't impact the high school students. We're asking to leave that day a regular day, just like JP Nat. Students will go to school March third. They have a required workday still for the district YPD that we're doing as is scheduled. Again, it's already an early release day on March twenty-seventh, so again, all of our K through high school families are all on the same schedule. It won't impact different schedules for them. And then that May optional workday again will slide to the end of the year. So our error, we just, we, nobody thought March was election day. Um, and so we caught it and we do need to make that modification to our calendars.
So we're gonna let our faculty members know.
Yes. Once you're okay with.
How about the parents? Are we gonna let them know?
Nah.
If you approve it.
Yes, we will. As long as it's approved, then we'll send out the alert now message with that modification in advance as well as faculty and students.
I, I know that a lot of times with optional workdays, that, you know, that's about the only time they can take their annual leave. And some will plan to take off on those optional workdays, so that's a no-no now for that, for that day. Because you took the one in May, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any questions from Ms. Doughty? 关于the calendar, okay. Next, facilities planning, student growth.
Um, each month, um, the, the board has asked for updates on, uh, what's happening with, uh, student populations at, at all of our schools. Uh, and at the last work session, uh, there were, um, conversations about, um, trigger percentages uh, to start, uh, future planning, uh, for either areas of the county or, or certain buildings. And so you see the December numbers. Um, I think there's a, a paper in your packet as well if you need something closer, uh, to your eyes. Uh, most, most, uh, buildings just kind of like hung at status quo. Um, we, uh, most of them are in like the, you know, within zero and two students of where they were in November. Uh, but we had a couple of blips. Um, southern part of the county, um, Jarvisburg and Griggs, uh, both lost, uh, more than five students. Um, you know, so they decreased in population. Um, Shawboro, uh, trickled up, uh, two students. Moyac Elementary.
Zero.
Zero, zero. No, we know girls in the last month, so, uh, they just kind of, they just kind of stayed at, at their number. Um, but the high school, um, had, um, we had some, uh, transfers, uh, quite a few. Uh, you know, we dropped, uh, fourteen students in, uh, six weeks. And, uh, I called, we had a couple of families that had multiple students. Uh, but, uh, overall, there were, uh, there were twelve families that, uh, covered those fourteen students that transferred out of high school. Uh, so they're down to a thousand six. So again, as far as district-wide, um, in, in our big population areas, uh, Moyac Middle went up six students. Uh, but, uh, the rest of them, uh, just kind of hung, uh, around where they were. You see the new color. It was supposed to be lavender. I think it's closer to lavender on the screen. It may have shown up in a brownish area on your, on your sheets off the copy machine. Those are the two buildings that are at ninety percent capacity or higher right now. Um, Jarvisburg was, but they dropped down to two seventy-five, and so they're at about eighty-eight and a half percent right now. Um, they would need to be at two seventy-nine, uh, to get to ninety percent.
Does, I want to add that Central Griggs and Shawboro, you have to back out some numbers for preschool students in there. So in, in case you were trying to number crunch, you say, we don't get funded for preschool students.
So these numbers include the preschool?
Those numbers include preschools.
The, the reason I keep those in the, the ADM numbers is because they are using spaces.
Space.
Uh, and so if we would transition those to, uh, uh, K through five, um, student places, we would have to find spaces then for our preschools.
So, to your point, we don't get funded?
Correct.
By?
By the state. We don't get an ADM number.
So we pick that up with the local monies?
Pre-K.
No.
No, you get a pre-K.
It's pre-K funding. It's a separate, but if you were to run numbers and say, this is how much we got per pupil, it wouldn't match up.
No, I get that. I just was trying to.
We do get funding.
Okay.
Different pot.
So did, 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 did you mention, I, I'm sorry, I, I might not have heard, but did you explain to them that what we're trying to do with the ninety percent?
No, I thought that would be part of the discussion here. Uh, that, uh, at the board's, uh, last work session a couple of weeks ago, um, it was determined that when, uh, a building hit ninety percent, there would be some planning meetings, um, for that particular building. Uh, what is going to be the plan if the population continues to rise? One of our ninety percent buildings right now, we, we've got a plan initiated. Uh, we are, uh, you know, finalizing the, the bidding process for mobile units for Moyac Elementary School. Uh, and we're also looking for land to build, uh, a new school in, somewhere in the north end. Uh, so that's the plan for that school with Moyac Middle School being there. And their trend is that since the year began, they're up twenty-one students. Then we start a plan for Moyac Middle School. How do we deal, you know, with that population? Some of the options for dealing with the population are purchase more mobile units. Um, as the different sites hit ninety percent, they continue to rise. Possibly look at, um, school boundary lines and see if, uh, there's capacity at another school at the same level uh, that could help out, um, you know, with the boundary line switch. Or again, approach commissioners, um, for, um, the planning to start for, uh, another piece of land and another school at whatever level the ninety percent school is at. So, uh, again, right now, we've got Moyac Elementary in the beginning stages of two different processes, and we'll have to start a conversation about Moyac Middle School, uh, on how to, uh, address them as they approach their capacities.
Mark, could you add a third column? Look at Central Elementary and you have two thirty-six.
Yep.
And minus two.
Yep.
And then could you put another figure right next to it, the percent of capacity that that is?
That way we'll not, I mean, it just glares out.
I thought, we also said we're gonna, that's gonna trigger a discussion in ninety percent.
Right.
We're gonna come up with a plan. It's gonna trigger a meeting for their discussion. And then by ninety-five percent.
The plan has started.
The plan's in place.
Plan's in place. Yeah, the plan is in place.
And, and we also talked a little bit about, you know, we, we don't, like, right now, we're, we're over capacity, correct? At Moyac.
One building. Yes.
We don't have to be over capacity to start building a school.
No, you don't have to.
Yeah.
But you have to, you have to, uh, definitely the two boards have to be in agreement about.
Well, I think when we get to, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent, we need to start really looking at doing some. I mean, I don't think this is a good thing, the situation we're in right now with Moyac Elementary. I really don't, that we're over capacity and we're at least three years out of the school.
But we'll see, what we're trying to do is we're trying to have a number matched to the number that we picked for capacity for the building, whether you agree with it, I agree with it or not, and multiply it by ninety percent. And reaches that, then we have a discussion, get a plan. Thus hopefully we won't find ourselves with, uh, fifty students over capacity like we're doing with right now.
Well, I, you know, and you're looking at three years to build a school.
Yeah, but I'm looking at years, years of, 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 uh, miscommunication, this, uh.
Can I suggest that? Take a couple of the board members up to Moyac Elementary and you, Randy, walk through and show them two of the full-size classrooms at least that we can get.
We can, yeah, we can show the building in operation, um, you know. Uh, again, what I tried to explain and, and it may not have been clear enough at the work session, the capacity numbers that we have up there are based on the K through three target number from the state. Uh, and so that number sits at five sixty. You know, and, and I know we don't want to go over, you know, totally, but as, as we go up two kids per, per class, that could take care of forty of the fifty that you're over capacity right now. Uh, and that's not a, again, that's not a, um, a, a typical operating, um, setting. But what it is, is it's still the ability to operate inside of the designated spaces for K through five elementary.
What rooms are the, Brandon, did?
We have one, we have an AC room that we could use, um, and it, that room would be feasible because that teacher pushes in his school.
And it would accommodate how many students?
It's a regular sized classroom, so, yeah.
So if they're fifty over, why aren't we already doing it? Until we get the, the other part of the plan engaged. I'm, look, here's the deal. I, I don't know about everybody else, but I personally think at a certain level of capacity, after you breach that, the quality of service drops off. Now that's what I believe. So what I'm trying to do is push us in a different mindset and a different direction. Not can we max this building out or overcapacity it and have a reaction to it. What I want is I want to have a plan, whether I agree wholeheartedly with the number or a little less or a little more, we're all gonna come together and we're gonna come up with a plan. So that we are providing a high level of service. And by the time we get into a problem area and the service is dropping off as the capacity is very high, we are doing something else with a plan. I don't want to react. I don't want to come out with trailers. I don't want to kick the can down the road. I want to have a plan with, that's what I want to do.
So Mark, based on what we decided at our last work session, we should be having a planning meeting for Moyac Middle School.
Right.
Because.
And I believe that's the January meeting.
Okay.
That's the January meeting.
We have meetings scheduled.
As of the December meeting, I thought we were gonna have to have a planning meeting for Moyac Middle and Jarvisburg.
And this is the time.
Levelled out a little bit.
This is where we can talk about mobile units, boundary changes.
Yes.
And a new school, whatever.
Process for another building if you need it. Yes. That's the planning meeting. Yeah.
Good.
And if the board, if it's the board's pleasure, if we have a specific building in mind, if you want to involve, um, the administrator, you know, from that building in the conversations, then the administrator can be there and talk about what's occurring at the building currently, and then they could add their, um, their specific, uh, information from that school and, and involve them in the discussion.
Sounds good. Okay. Uh, formalize Moyac Elementary School and Shawboro Elementary School boundary decision.
Okay. We had, uh, uh, we, we had a, a phone poll, uh, you know, with the board uh, because there was, uh, uh, some, uh, activity happening with, um, developments on the north end, um, a couple of weeks ago. And so I wanted to, um, ask the board to, um, formalize that because somebody said, is that part of the minutes? And I said, we haven't had a meeting, and so we're gonna have an official meeting in December. Uh, and what we went off of, uh, at the planning meeting that we met, we have a boundary that was set, uh, in two thousand eight. And, uh, that particular boundary, uh, cuts across these properties. Okay, what you'll see on the screen shortly, uh, is the, is the boundary, um, there it is. Um, and if you can expand it just to make sure that you can see that yellow area. Okay, a little bit smaller. Okay, there it is. There you go. There you go. You got that. There you go. Okay. Um, as you can see, the, um, the, uh, the boundary as set in two thousand eight, um, diagonally, um, crosses two.
Parcels.
Parcels, yeah.
Divides.
They have been subdivided since that line was put in.
Yeah, that they're different, uh, there are different stages of, um, uh, of the, the process for getting approved as a development. Uh, with the board decided in the phone poll, everybody was comfortable with the fact that, um, the vast majority of the FOSS property is in the Shawboro, um, district. And so the remaining, uh, ten to fifteen percent in that upper left-hand corner, um, should be rolled in with the rest of the development. And then that whole development was designated as, as Shawboro. In the flora, um, I actually blew this picture up and. In the Flora, I actually blew this picture up and for the first time in a long time, actually used a ruler. And, you know, I had to actually go and try to find one. And I split the property into, what did we have? We had rectangles, we had triangles, we had parallelograms and remembering all the area formulas for all those different shapes, trying to do, trying to do an estimate of the split and the split on the Flora property since the survey road piece is much thicker than the piece that connects with ranchland at the bottom. The Flora piece is actually closer to thirty-five percent Shawboro and sixty-five percent Moyac. And so then the Flora property was designated as a Moyac development area. With that being said, the question for the board is, do we just waiver that ten to fifteen percent of the Foss property into Shawboro since so much more of the proposed development is in Shawboro? Or are we talking about redrawing the line to take that zigzag property line between Foss and Flora?
I think we don't. I thought he said the commissioners wanted, you know, a clear cut, you know, the Foss property boundary and the Flora property boundary, if that's what we decided.
Commissioners said that they weren't gonna make a decision on split because they said if any piece was in Moyac, that then they would say that they would, that one would be not able to be taken care of because Moyac Elementary is already over capacity. My question is, by wavering in the other ten to fifteen percent, does that meet the need of the commissioners?
I think they want it cleaned up.
Right.
Well, I know we want it cleaned up, but I thought that what our discussion was is that we were going to leave it the way it was and that we were going to accept that the majority of the Foss property was in Shawboro and not react to their situation. And then we were gonna meet in January and then we might change boundaries then or whatever. But I don't think we should change our boundaries just to, I thought that's what we all decided.
I agree with that except for, I agree with that. I think we shouldn't do it until we are, probably by the time that stuff's ready to go, the new school's gonna be on point. We could do it all at the same time really because the new school's gonna impact those parcels very likely. However, I thought they said that, I don't know, I thought you said the lawyer said that we could actually change that line and it would be okay.
We can, but here's what, it's a slippery slope because you've got to be real careful. Since ninety percent of Foss is in Shawboro, we could take that ten percent and kind of grandfather that in with that line. But we, we cannot do anything with Flora right, right now.
We, we can say that depending on where the majority of the parcel is, that's where they go to school. The majority of the Foss property is in Shawboro, so they would go to school.
Oh yeah, most definitely.
The majority of the Flora is in Moyac.
Yeah, but we need to change, we need to, we need to change that line so that all of the Foss is in Shawboro, at least for that and then we can, we can deal with the other at a later date.
So instead of a straight line, make like a little zigzag line from?
What you could do.
The commissioners proposed three different options. One, moving the line all the way further south to the yellow Foss line and saying everything's Moyac.
Right, which would not be a good thing.
One, separating cleanly the two tracks of.
Moyac's overcrowded.
Right, the two parcels of land so that one was very clean Moyac, one was very clean Shawboro. Or move the line all the way to the northern yellow line and say everything is Shawboro.
Yeah.
They also said that our decision's final and on appeal.
Right, well, and so there actually is a fourth one if you wanted to do it and I think this is what Karen is suggesting, that you just start here and you just square out that, that triangle right there so you don't get it right into the definition between the two properties. You just bring this last ten to fifteen percent.
We're gonna go ahead and finish off that little other guy right below there.
Do the triangle.
And then we're not changing the whole boundary until we have that meeting and really work together.
Exactly.
We're changing that part to increase them being in the right place, ten percent. But we're not messing with anything with the Flora property until afterwards. He does want us to have bound, our school boundaries based on.
On parcel lines.
Parcel lots.
Yes, yeah.
But I don't think we should do that just as a reaction to.
Probably this has ever come up.
Right, right.
With a parcel being divided into two school sets.
Well, yes and no. We, we made an assumption with bus routes in the past because I think there was one route, one house, I think, right up there by the, where it says the Gables. There was one house and so that's where that little jog happened, you know, in the, in the, because it was a, it was a straight diagonal line. And so we had, we had every other house in a current development up there, a newer development, and one house, you know, was right there by Guinea Road.
Probably because of the road, that road.
Yeah, yeah, the road curled.
The road that goes up in there.
Yeah, yeah. So we sent everybody in that development to the same school so that we just took a little bit of liberty and took that little jog. Now you're saying the same thing for that ten percent in Foss and we can do that. No, no, you mean the yellow?
Yeah.
Right above the S and to the left.
Yeah, that ninety degree.
No, no, no.
We've got two, right? So that's part of that.
That little corner.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I thought you were saying move the yellow, I can't do that. Can't change people's property holding, yeah. So square off both, both little right angles.
You're gonna separate out that parcel.
Yes, yes.
And then eventually, when we get ready to do it, we will divide the.
Yeah, when it's time, if you, yeah, set it up by parcels.
I just think, I'll say it again, we need to be real careful to not get involved with making a decision based on a developer's.
Wish, yes.
And, and it's a slippery slope, but with Shawboro, ninety, probably more than ninety percent is already in Shawboro. But I just want to caution everybody, you've got to be real careful with the decisions that we make, what schools are gonna go to in changing lines based on a developer's preference. So with that.
Or the county's preference.
Or the county's, yeah. Um, okay, so we'll vote on that tonight?
That we're gonna change, put all of the Foss property into Moyac, I mean, in the Shawboro.
So just to be clear, and I understand what we're doing, but Renee, when you mentioned the three options that they recommended, that's kind of a hybrid, maybe a fourth option, isn't it?
Right, that's what I said. This is the fourth one, is to take just the corners.
Okay.
Doing that.
Um, y'all, do you want to go ahead and be dismissed or y'all can have time to get something to eat?
Yes, please.
Okay, y'all go ahead and we'll, we'll see you at six thirty.
Thank you.
If the, if the board would like, the last two items on here are part of the consent agenda and I can just give a quick briefing before.
Why don't we do that?
At the regular meeting and then we could adjourn the work session.
That would be helpful. These people have been at work, some of them, since six o'clock.
Okay, do I have a motion that we?
You need to close the work session.
Close the work session.
So, actually, yes, after we do this, I want to make another motion. Can I make, maybe I should do it now. Can I make a motion that we go back into closed session?
We can when we go there.
When we go there.
That's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, work session is closed.